Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. This is July the 16th, a special board meeting by the Board of Supervisors. This meeting is being livestreamed electronically, so hello to all of you out there watching. Could I have the clerk of the board see who's on the telephone with us?
Supervisor Angus?
Here.
Supervisor Johnson?
Present.
Supervisor Gould?
Here.
Okay, and Supervisor Watson is here with us today. So, the Board of Supervisors made by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the Board's attorney on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to ARS 38431.03. The official business to come before the Board. The first item is an update from the County Health Director to the Board of Supervisors regarding recent issues, actions, events, and county responses regarding the COVID, and updates, and taking any necessary action based upon those updates. So today we have Melissa Palmer representing the Public Health Department, and I'll turn the floor over to you, Melissa.
Okay. Good afternoon, Board of Supervisor members.
Is your speaker turned on?
Is it on?
I can hear you now.
Okay. Yesterday, we had a record number of cases reported at 137. There have been a total of 2,084 cases in the county reported to date. 96 of those resulted in death. Bullhead City is at 984 cases. Kingman at 434 cases. Lake Havasu City at 626 cases, and then our North Counties reported at 40 cases. The average age of our cases are 48.6 years old. Our average age for deaths is at 78 years old. And we're continuing to see the growth in that 20- to 50-year-old age group. Looking at the cases since July 1st, Lake Havasu has had an increase of 157%, which is the fastest growing compared to the other major cities. Kingman's at 38%. Bullhead City's at 83%, and North County is at 16%. Any questions on those?
Does anyone have any questions? I don't hear any. Thank you.
Okay. Our hospital status update was sent out this morning. They are running about the same as they have been over the last week. No major changes in the number of items utilized as ventilators in the beds utilized in the hospitals. Are there any questions on the hospital status update from this morning?
Any questions for Melissa?
Supervisor Johnson, I have a question.
Yes, Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
Regarding ventilators, I notice we're getting close to max and sometimes running with just one available in the one hospital. Do we, or does the hospital obviously take into consideration that they're getting low on ventilators and ship some patients out that might be able to be shipped? I don't know if you can ship somebody on a ventilator. I mean, I just worry that, you know, if we have a car wreck or some kind of a medical emergency, a heart attack or something where somebody might need a ventilator and we don't have them available, or do we just, if we have an accident, we just ship them to the next hospital?
It is my understanding that they do utilize the surge line, which is statewide, and if they're in need of moving a patient or obtaining additional equipment, then they can utilize that surge line to take care of that situation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Supervisor Watson.
Thank you, Chairman Bishop. Melissa, question on testing. Are there new or improved abilities to test individuals now, and what is the turnaround time on that?
The turnaround time continues to be dependent upon where those tests are being taken. So if it's sent to a private facility, or if it's sent to state lab, the turnaround times could be anywhere from the next day all the way until about 10 days out. Yeah, 10 days out. The test, the reliability, was that the other question that you had about the tests improving? Can you repeat that part of your question?
Well, I had a constituent ask me this morning if we could identify those areas that are, those companies that are doing the testing, and what the turnaround times are for that. So the constituents will know the availability of the testing, so possibly by next Thursday, if we could have that available.
Absolutely, I can.
Put it up on our website, the number and locations throughout Mojave County, and what their turnaround times are. And I think what prompted this was because that person had to do some traveling and it required some testing to enter another state. So if you could provide that information, I'm sure it'd be helpful to many people.
I will look into that and obtain that information, and then we can look further into posting that somewhere.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
Okay. As it pertains to testing availability, we are continuing to work with each city on increasing the availability of tests to the public. So we've been participating in meetings throughout the week. Our Public Health Emergency Preparedness Coordinator has been on those calls, and also our director has been in on those calls with city leaders for that. And then a staffing update. We have six of the case investigators. They will be joining our team on Monday, and they will be trained and brought up to speed, and then they'll be able to take over the case investigating. Any questions on that? No?
Any questions? None. Thank you.
And that is all that I have, but if any of you have any questions, I'm open to answering them, or making my best attempt.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions of Ms. Palmer?
Supervisor Johnson?
Go ahead, Supervisor Johnson.
Go ahead.
Would it be possible, with the majority of our cases being under investigation, that at some point we get some kind of, maybe a percentage or something of the people who are hospitalized or at home, you know, at a future date to kind of give us an idea of how those things are going?
Would that be doable? Yeah, we can definitely work on that with our team, to get a percentage of hospitalized versus at home and recovering or resting, or whatever the status might be.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions at this time, but I have some other things when we get ready to talk about the COVID.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Does anybody else have any comments or questions of Melissa?
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Angus?
Thank you. So now that, you know, there's a lot, there's more information out there than we've had before, and people are coming to me with graphs and charts from other places that, you know, show the numbers in a, in just a more easier-to-understand way. They're not that hard, and I do not want to task Public Health with anything more. I know you guys are crazy busy. But I was wondering if perhaps my office can take some of the information we get, not the ones and stuff that's confidential, but, and put it in a way, I don't want to do anything that's going to conflict with Public Health, but if we can help in any way, you know, I'd like to take the numbers and, you know, take them out from Bullhead City and just put them in a way that's just easier than what they've been seeing. Most people don't go to the website, and just taking some of that and making it kind of easy to understand. Would that be okay?
We can definitely work with you and your staff to develop something that could then be put out into the public, definitely.
Okay. So we won't do anything unless we run it by you?
Okay. Yep.
Okay. Thank you. That's it, Madam Chair.
Okay. Anyone else? Supervisor Gould, do you have anything? Okay, one thing that I wanted to ask you, Ms. Palmer. At the last meeting, we certainly heard the cries of the few anti-mask protesters that were here in our audience, and in hearing so, what are your thoughts of being able, you know, we have face masks available to people that don't have one, but what about face shields? Maybe that would be more pleasing to some of those type people. What are your thoughts on that?
Face shields, well, I'm sorry, Lynn. Will you come up and speak to this? Face shields have been a topic of discussion that we have had with other departments, and Lynn Valentine, our nursing manager, has been the one that has done a lot of that research and looked at that information, so she can best speak to it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Valentine.
Hi. So if you look on the CDC website, it does address the use of face masks, or, excuse me, face shields. And face shields mostly are designed to be used in conjunction with some other PPE, namely masks. They do say that they should not be used as a substitute for mask, for a mask. If they are used in lieu of a mask, that they should be closed, you know, underneath the chin, it should be enclosed. So I don't know also the availability, if there's a wide availability for face shields as well, that might be the other element. But with them being open on the bottom, you know, we're trying to prevent, by wearing masks, we're trying to prevent our droplets, our respiratory droplets, from being expelled. And when they're open on the bottom, then you don't, you're not able to contain the droplets.
So wouldn't the droplets drop down on a person's lap if they were seated in the auditorium? I mean, they wouldn't be going out.
Right. They wouldn't be projected straight out.
Even if they sneeze, they would hit the shield and then drop down.
Correct. So they would still escape, yes. So I know some places have felt that, you know, for those individuals who cannot wear a mask, because we know there are some who are not able to because of various reasons.
Yes.
They have opted to allow them to wear them because they feel it's better than nothing. But if we went strictly on what CDC recommends, they do say, you know, they should not be used in lieu of a face mask, and if they are, they should be enclosed at the bottom.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Johnson?
Going on your face shields, which is a good idea, I know the courts have had a problem, like all of us do, with people coming in and whether they have any doctor's exemption, or they just pretend they have a doctor's exemption. The courts have mandated, or mandating that they have the face shield if they cannot wear a face mask. I think it would be imperative that the county amend our mask policy to say that we will furnish the face shields for those who have doctor's orders claiming they can't wear a face mask, and that the county immediately go to purchase those and make sure that all departments have both the face mask and the face shields. Not only protects the people who have breathing problems from other people breathing on them with no kind of protection at all, it's just one more partial layer to help keep our people safe. We're getting more and more people that are testing positive in our county departments, and as we all know, we're short-staffed anyway, and without, especially at the courts, if they lose some of their key people, it's going to keep putting our courts farther and farther behind, which puts a burden on all of our people in our county who have anything to do with the courts.
Chairman Bishop, can I also add to that as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ryan.
And so I support Supervisor Johnson's recommendation as well, and just kind of talk about the legality. I respect and defer to the Public Health for the medical information and the public health assistance that they're providing to us. As far as the legal side is concerned, here's kind of the situation we're in. The Americans with Disability Act, it applies to government entities. There's three different sections, Titles 1, 2, and 3. The titles that apply to the county are Titles 1 and 2. Title 1 is mostly employment stuff, and we can talk about that separately, but the one that Supervisor Johnson is currently talking about is Title 2. And what that says is, in essence, is that government services, government programs must be open equally to all persons, regardless of disability. So if we have a program, if we have something that is offered to the public, that every person has a right to access that, regardless of disability. So when we have something like, if somebody wants to come into the public and use our services, we need to offer that to them, and if somebody says, "Well, I have a disability, I cannot do this," then we need to be able to provide a reasonable accommodation to allow that person to participate and utilize our services. So bringing that down in the context of the mask requirement that the Board has passed. The Board has requested, the Board has stated that any persons entering a public building, entering a Mojave County building are required to wear a mask unless they have an exemption. One of those exemptions is the medical exemption. What we can do here is we can say, okay, if somebody comes in and says, you know, "I cannot wear a mask because of medical exemption," by offering the face mask, that is a reasonable accommodation for that person. We can say, okay, we understand that you cannot wear a mask, so we'll offer to you a shield. And this shield is a reasonable accommodation to allow you to come into our buildings, to allow you to participate in our services, but also to be in compliance with what the Board has ordered. So I see this face shield as a reasonable accommodation for persons who are exempt from the mask requirement. It is not to replace it, as the Public Health has pointed out, for people who can wear a mask. Instead, it is a reasonable accommodation for persons who have a medical exemption. There can also be some other, there can also be some other reasonable accommodations. For example, you could say, well, you know, if you can't wear a mask and you don't, then why don't we do this transaction by the telephone? Why don't we do this transaction by email? Can we do other things to accommodate your disability? So we can do that as well. But to me, this is just another way to offer services to the public for persons who cannot wear the mask because of a medical exemption. And that's what the court is doing here. I mean, that's what the courts are doing, is the courts are providing a service to the public, and they're requiring face masks. And for those who cannot wear the face mask because of the medical exemption, the courts are saying, okay, here's a reasonable accommodation, why don't you use the face shield? Why don't we do this by telephone? Why don't we do these other things? So I think it's consistent with what the court's doing, and I would be in favor, I would recommend that you go forward with that just to allow reasonable accommodation. Sorry, go ahead.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Understanding what Ryan just stated, my question or concern is that the supply of face shields that we have in the county, and the availability to stock up on that to provide that option. So the question is to either you, Melissa, or Byron, or whoever can answer that question. I support what the Board members are saying and what Ryan just explained. I just want to make sure that we have the supply to accommodate that type of offer. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair?
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Johnson?
In response to County Manager, I've checked into him, and there seems to be an abundance, especially of the face shields, with the two- to three-day delivery, obviously if they met our requirements. But I think it's important that we start ordering those and more masks, if that's what the Health Department wants to do, because I know the courts are running low, and they have a tremendous amount of customer service at that department. That's all, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments about face shields? Melissa, do you have any?
The one comment I would make is that it is correct that we do not have abundant supply of those on hand, so we would have to order those and work through the process to get those in-house before we start offering them out to each department or to the front of each building, depending on where we have those located.
Supervisor Watson?
Madam Chairman?
Nope. Supervisor Johnson, or, is that Gould? Okay. Supervisor Gould?
It's Gould. The County Health Department might want to investigate disposable face shields so that they don't have to worry about sanitizing them after they're used by members of the public.
Oh, yeah. That's a very good idea, and I would support that, and I'd be in favor of disposable face shields if they make such an item, and I think they do. So Melissa's nodding her head, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Gould. Any other comments? Questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
I would make a motion to amend our ordinance or order that face masks be worn in the county buildings to include face shields for anybody who is not unable to wear a mask, and that we allocate funds from our cares to cover the expense.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Supervisor Angus, are you there?
I'm here, I'm waiting for, I didn't hear all those again.
Okay. Any opposed? Madam Clerk, did you get the count? All right, can we do a voice count then?
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Angus?
No.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
Yes.
Chairman Bishop?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. And I just want to remind those watching that Mojave County has mandated masks be worn within county buildings, but we have not mandated masks be worn in the unincorporated areas of Mojave County. So there's a little misconception out there that we have done that, but as of current, we are not mandating masks in the unincorporated areas of Mojave County. Just wanted to get that cleared up. Okay. And another thing I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of, Governor Ducey will be having a press conference today at 3:00 p.m., if anybody wants to watch that and see what the governor is bringing to us today. Okay. Ms. Palmer, do you have anything further?
I do not have anything further today.
Okay. Are there any further comments or questions from the Board? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go on to the next item. This will be a discussion on possible action, receive an update and legal advice from the Mojave County Attorney's Office and Keller Rollback concerning the multi-jurisdictional opiate litigation in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio, further approve attorney-client privileged actions related to the case, and authorize the County Attorney's Office and/or Keller Rollback to participate in settlement discussions and execute documents that further enable settlement negotiations. So this was continued by the Board at our July 13 special meeting, and I believe we need a motion to go into executive session to further discuss this. Is that right, Mr. Ryan?
You would ask that, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session.
Second.
Do I hear a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. We will adjourn and come back into executive session, so I have to ask everyone in the audience to step out, please. so I have to ask everyone in the audience to step out, please.